This is Tuesday, July 6th. The Grand Forks with Jobs Development Authority. Welcome and roll call.
Mock.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Docler.
Here.
Thank you. Weber.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Veen. And Mayor Bicinski.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Item two, annual election of officers for Vice Chair and Secretary of Treasur.
Ms. Mock, as your staff report states, code change last December to make you as Vice President of Council Chair of the JDA. But we still need to hold annual elections for Vice Chair and the position of Secretary Treasurer. That was done a year ago today. And at that time, Mr. Veen was elected Vice Chair and Mr. Cavami Secretary Treasurer. So we need to have that election for those two positions.
Thank you. Any comments, motions?
I'll make a motion to keep the same council leadership or JDA leadership.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a very reluctant second. Any further comments or questions? Mr. Sandy? Or no? Okay.
Prepare to vote.
All right. All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, sign by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item three, JDA action items. Item 3.1, Accelerate Loan Program Modification.
As your staff report states, this originally was on the agenda to look at a request for our new Accelerate Loan Program from First ILLC. As this went through Growth Fund Committee, however, they were less interested in taking action on that request, but more interested in looking at the option of adding a convertible note to the program description. So that's the item that is before you tonight. The discussion at Growth Fund Committee was very positive in terms of the applicant and also very positive in terms of a convertible note, but there was the desire for more discussion on some of the finer points of how a convertible note would operate and setting some policies around that. The request out of committee was a contingent on the city attorney kind of confirming or verifying that the Growth Fund could take an equity position to move forward with a convertible note with what they requested would be considered an industry standard discount rate. Discussion by staff with other EDC staff, SBDC staff members kind of led us all to the conclusion that that 20% discount rate was what would be considered typical, and that's what's been incorporated into the program description, which is also attached to your staff report. The verbiage, of course, is that that would be what would be considered typical, but it's always the JDA's option to, you know, tailor each deal to the particular applicant. As I noted, the city attorney's office was asked to provide that confirmation on taking an equity position, and the memo is part of your staff report as well. If you'd like, Mr. Gosted could certainly expand on some of that. But the request before you tonight is pretty limited. The Growth Fund Committee has got a meeting scheduled for next Monday to talk about some of the details of a convertible note, but this would just kind of put it on the books that, yes, a convertible note is an option under this program.
Thank you. Mr. Cavami.
Yeah, and to clarify, so as a member of the Growth Fund, I think the intent was that Mr. Gosted, you know, confirmed that a convertible note was something that we could legally do and we wanted to pursue, and then we were going to meet and discuss the details and terms. So I believe that that's what we were hoping was being brought forth to JDA tonight. Is this approval of the actual application tonight?
No, this is just approval of adding that convertible note to the program description.
Perfect. Thank you. And I was unfortunately the arbiter of slowing this down a little bit just because I wanted to explore that option. So I appreciate all the effort that's going into that. I would motion approval.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Sandy. Further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Item 3.2, Assumption from AAA Quality Cleaners.
Members of the Authority, Chairperson Mock, in front of you is an assumption request from AAA Quality Cleaners. They received a C-run loan as a sole proprietorship in December of last year from the JDA. They have now formed an LLC. This is simply to update the loan docs to make sure that the LLC is included on the loan. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Did we need a public hearing for this one?
Yes.
Okay, let's, well, we'll take the motion in a second, but let's open the public hearing. Seeing no one, let's close the public hearing. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Item 3.3, Change in Lead Lender.
Good evening, Chairwoman Mock, members of the Authority. Back in late 2020, Associated Potato Growers Incorporated, APGI, received a Flexface loan from this entity. You might recall, just a couple of months ago, they came forward with a change in lead lender request, just simply changing banks essentially. Terms of the loan and everything remain the same. They're just opting to go with a different bank this time. So we're looking for approval to switch from the originally approved bank, Bremer, to Cota Bank. More broadly, we're also looking at for future requests, just so that we can be a little bit more responsive to, you know, future companies and lenders for, you know, similar requests where only the bank's name is changing, the loan terms are changing, that we be able to approve those administratively with the concurrence of the JDA chair. So looking for both of those.
Do you need those as separate motions?
I think they can be one motion, but they do need a public hearing.
Okay. Let's open a public hearing. See if there are any comments. Seeing no one, let's close the public hearing. Is there a request for either or both?
I'll move approval of both.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Veen. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. There a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Grand Forks City Council Meeting, Tuesday, July 6, 2021. Welcome everybody. Marine roll call, please.
Here.
Docler.
Here.
Weber.
Mock.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
And Veen.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. 1.2, Pledge Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the United Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
1.3, I got a couple of announcements tonight. I hope everybody had a good Fourth of July, but I thought some personally, there was a couple of people that we lost. One out at the airport in a pretty horrible accident out there by Airport Roward. Another one was an airman in an accidental drowning out on the Red Lake River. So another, you know, keep those families and your thoughts and prayers. I want to thank everyone that came out to the mayor's back the badge ride a couple of weeks ago, were able to raise $29,000 and really good attendance. 150 vehicles came. It was a really great event to show our law enforcement officers locally that we truly care about them, and it's something I hope to do in the future years. So it was really great to see. Kind of a special day and a special announcement today is we want to give special recognition to a city employee who received a national award. Our very own firefighter, Logan Shonart, became the 2021 National VFW Firefighter of the Year. And as part of the award, there was official correspondence read into the Congressional Records sponsored by Senator Kevin Kramer. So I've got a certified copy here that I'm going to read. It reads, "Senate congratulating Logan Shonart, National VFW Firefighter of the Year. Mr. President, I want to honor a Grand Forks firefighter for receiving a national honor by the VFW. Saving lives is what firefighters are called on to do as part of their everyday job, but in the case of Logan Shonart, his life-saving act went much beyond that. When members of the Grand Forks Fire Department heard Rick Amat, their former battalion chief, was suffering from kidney disease and needed a new kidney, they were concerned enough to look into how they could help, because it can take several years to find a donor. They joined in the search to find one. Shonart was among those who took a test for compatibility, and his test showed that he was a match. Having worked together for nearly a decade before Amat retired, Shonart thought enough of him to step forward and offer to be his donor. Shonart was not looking for publicity about the successful kidney donation, but he spoke out about it to encourage others to consider doing the same if the opportunity presented itself. In recognition of his generous life-saving act, Shonart was named 2020 North Dakota VFW Fighter of the Year. Earlier this month, he was named the 2021 National VFW Firefighter of the Year. The award was presented May 7 at the Grand Forks Fire Station. Mr. President, I congratulate Logan Shonart on this national honor recognizing a firefighter who exceeds professional expectations and demonstrates community service and professional achievement. As a 2021 National VFW Firefighter of the Year, he sets an extraordinary example for all of us demonstrating what selfless sacrifice looks like." So I don't believe Mr. Shonart's here, but everyone, let's just give him one more round of applause for his... Just another great example of just a selfless, humble human being and just the great people we have here in Grand Forks. All right, with that, we'll move on to two rewards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
All right, 2.1, Presentation, Hugo's Raceway and Veterans Memorial Park Update.
Mr. Feeling.
Mayor Bicinski, members of the City Council. I have three videos, two of the, you know, Hugo's Raceway that I'd like to show you, a couple of drone videos, and then finally, Mr. Palmer's here, I'll call you General Palmer, regarding the Veterans Memorial Park. So I think these are projects that I'm really proud the city has helped participate in and really gotten across the finish line. And so we'll start with the Hugo's Raceway, and then I'll ask Mr. Weigel, as his private citizen, kind of give an update on what kind of scheduling is going to happen after that. So with that, we'll show everyone a couple videos. As we go through the City Council, you guys authorized us to help with the asphalt on this, on this particular raceway. You allowed us to use some clay, and so we did that. Electrical and the stormwater pond that gets the, so those have been our investments as part of this Hugo's Raceway development. Well, I'll go on to the next one. That's the one video. Maybe I'll hand it over to, just so you know that we've used existing contracts regarding this raceway, so we've used the stormwater pond, the asphalt, the clay hauling, and the electrical. So we've kind of integrated that into various projects to help move this project forward in this timeframe. We were hoping to try to get this wrapped up by June, and so we're a little bit beyond that, but I think we've met a lot of the criteria to kind of get the project done with your authorization. So number one, thanks, thanks to Mayor Bicinski, thanks for City Council to allowing us to work with this, the BMX Club and getting this raceway. I think the other group that we have worked with is the Alara Center and some of the sponsorships that the BMX Club has worked with. So I think it's really worked well. I think one of the concerns the Alara Center and the commission had was to make sure it fits right within that area, and I think we've accomplished that. If you drive out there and take a look, it really does fit well within that. I think it further allows us to look at other experiences that we're working on in the community that we can, if the city kind of gets involved and starts partnering, we can get other projects across the finish line too, that may be a little bit larger with that. So I'd hand it off to Mr. Weigel to let us know kind of where we go from here, and really we wanted to drive, you know, economic development and quality of life as part of these developments.
Absolutely. Thank you, Todd. I'll be brief. This really started as a vision of the Red River BMX Board a number of months ago and finally came to fruition. We are planning on opening next Tuesday, having the grand opening with racing going on and kind of cut the ribbon and get everybody acclimated to it. And one of the things that I think we've all probably heard for quite some time on the council is activities for kids. And I think this is one of those activities that was outside the city of Grand Forks and was able to be brought inside the city of Grand Forks, and it's now accessible for kids to be able to ride over on a Tuesday or Thursday night or a Monday night for practice. Todd mentioned the other thing, economic development. The following weekend, we're going to be hosting riders from the Bismarck area, Aberdeen area, Rapid City, and some places in Minnesota as well. So the board's been hard at work getting some of those regional races. There's been some work trying to get a national race here that would bring over 1,000 riders from about 40 different states. And so we think this is a great activity for kids. It has an opportunity to bring people from all around the U.S., and we're happy that the city of Grand Forks, the Alara Center, and so many others have partnered to come forward to get this thing off the ground. And there's been a lot of volunteer hours. I spend most of my nights and weekends at the track from 5 till 10 or 5:30 till 10 every single night, getting everything ready. And it's an all-volunteer base, so it's 100% for the kids, and we're excited to be moving forward. So just a quick thank you to the council, the mayor, the city of Grand Forks, Alara Center, and everybody involved, and especially all of our volunteers that have put in so much time and effort to provide a good space for kids to compete and excel. And the only other thing I'd mention is one of our riders, Caleb Block, recently suffered a neck injury from a mountain biking accident. So just take a second to keep him and your thoughts and prayers, and his family and your thoughts and prayers as he starts his rehab journey.
Thank you, Mr. Weigel. I think we can all thank you and those volunteers out there. It was a very small investment with a very high ceiling as far as what it can bring this community. So great story. Thank you.
Good. And Mayor, you're going to finalize some projects in reason why we have the Veterans Memorial Park, not only to give an update on kind of where their kind of ribbon cutting is going to happen later this fall or late summer. It's also the City Council, a couple of years ago, and City Council President, you were here really to push up what kind of, well, how could we invest in this park? And we chose to invest in the visitor center where the restrooms are also located, and so you're going to finalize that project out today, so I wanted to give us some thank yous and allow General Palmer here to kick this off. Similar to what Council member Weigel said, really a lot of these, the best projects are those that are served with citizens, that are really engaged. And so we really kind of helped facilitate and move those across. And so General Palmer, really probably a few years ago, really got involved regarding this project with some others and really kind of kicked this off because it had been kind of, we'll call it meandering or muddling through, and then he kind of took it over with Mr. Sadler and really took off and this project moved forward. So I just want to show you some aerial images of that, and then afterwards just send some thank yous to all those that have been involved, so. Let's see here. Well, here we go. So those are the quick images, and again, we, the city of Grand Forks, we participated in the, this visitor center that we're calling right now, the General Palmer Visitor Center, I should call it. And so back in the day, a couple of years ago, the city agreed to invest about $150,000 into that. The Park District also added $36,000 into that visitor center so they could store equipment to maintain this particular park. So again, it was another nice partnership between the city and the Park District. All told, the visitor center came in at $485,000. We did have to, we did rebid that project, and so there was a bit of a gap that they've been able to fund forward. So I want to give some thank yous. Number one, to the current mayor and his predecessor, Mayor Brown, for supporting this, and both two city councils that supported this project. I want to give a big shout out to Mark Walker, our Assistant City Engineer, who's winding down his career with the city. He was the project manager to really help lead this project forward. I think helped provide a lot of guidance to this group to get it, to get it moving forward, similar to what we did with the BMX Group to try to get the project done. WFW, Webster Foster Western was the engineer that we hired. We hired them under agreement for about $50,000, and Dale Burgum. So they helped move forward with the project and helped with all the site work and the construction of that. And so they're owed really a debt of gratitude because Mr. Walker wanted me, make sure I point out, they probably have in-kind donated about $120,000 worth of work because they were so committed to this particular project to move it across the finish line. The contractors were Sand Steel on the building side, Mosted on the underground, and they provided a lot of in-kind for the construction of this. And in fact, Mosted installed the water and wastewater for zero cost, and Sand Steel did write down. So it was really a community-wide effort just on our part, which is the visitor center. And I know the Park District has provided a lot of investment, and when you see all the sidewalks and that sort of thing, they've been a real committed partner on this. So with that, I also wanted to provide General Palmer an opportunity to give us a project update and some important dates in the future.
Give me a microphone and captive audience.
That should only take 45 minutes. First of all, Mayor, City Council, thank you so much for your unwavering support for this project. It's kind of a white hat project because it's here to honor our veterans, that some of them made the ultimate sacrifice and things like that. We were fortunate, we raised a little over 1.1 million in cash. We've got over a million dollars of in-kind support, and that's from the city, the businesses, the people in the greater Grand Forks area, extremely, extremely generous. We're going to open the park September 11th, which is the 20th anniversary of 9/11, and we're, we just picked that date, to be quite honest, and it turned out that we put a request in to have a B-52 flyover at 2:15 on that day, and I got a call from the Air Force that said, "Is this a celebration for 9/11 or is it for the park?" And of course, I said, "Well, both, you know, and increase our chance of getting that flyover." Our guest speakers, we're going to kick it off with the mayor. We have General Al Dormand, the Adjutant General from the state of North Dakota. He'll be followed by the wing commander of Grand Forks Air Force Base, and the keynote speaker is the president of UND, President Armicost. We tried to keep it as much military-centric as we could for the speakers. That was the wishes of the veterans. You know, we could, we could have our congressional delegation and things like that, but they really wanted to keep it as centric military as we possibly could. Some things that are still outstanding, we turned the park over April 21st to the Park Board so they could open it up, open the bathrooms up, and people could, you know, use the park. We're still working on some ground issues. We're going to put in additional irrigation systems for more of the park. General Atomix has donated a quarter-scale Reaper. North of Grumman has donated a 1/10 scale Global Hawk, and unfortunately Boeing wouldn't give us a B-52, so we had to buy one. But we bought a 1A scale B-52. And Icon Architects are designing what that display is going to look like, but basically they'll be clustered close to that anchor just north of the roundabout with a sidewalk going around them. President Armicost has said he would donate some of the bricks from the Veterans Memorial Stadium. We got to figure out how we're going to use those, but we could use those bricks in that area, probably. The donor wall, the names will be going up soon. Tom, bless his heart, I told him if he didn't have to sleep at night, he could get more done, but he just wants to go to sleep. The kiosk will be installed in July. It's a 70-inch large screen TV touchscreen, so if you, you can call up the wall, and if you wanted to learn about Charles Lindbergh, you could touch his picture, and then a narrative will come up. If you wanted to learn where a block is located, a brick, we've mapped those all out. You can call that up by name, type it in, and it'll show you where that brick is at. So it's going to be a nice addition. We're going to put some display cases in there to put some artifacts. The university has said they would give us some stuff, and there's some other military people that have stuff to give that we could, we could put in there on a rotating basis. So pending that, that's my statement. Any questions?
Any questions for General Palmer? It can safely be said without you, this project wouldn't have happened. So thank you for your, you're another humble guy that never admit that, but if you didn't come in and make it what it was, it wasn't going to happen.
Thank you. It was a good team, good team. I get all the credit, and everybody else does all the work. Thanks, guys.
I think that's what comes with being a general.
Yeah, that could be. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, three public hearings and second readings of ordinances.
3.1, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinance relating to Water and Wastewater.
Thank you. Open the public hearing on item 3.1. Public hearing period is closed. Any comments? Those will be looking for a motion to approve 3.1.
So moved.
Got a motion from Mr. Weigel. We got a second from Mr. Veen. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. 3.1 carries unanimously. Four action items. Staff would like to poll 4.1. We've got some speakers here on 4.3, so I would imagine council would prefer to have 4.3 polled as well. Otherwise, we can, is there anything else the council would like to be polled on the consent agenda? All right, otherwise, we'll be looking for a vote on item 4.2, 4.4, 4.5, and 4.6. Can I get a motion to approve those items? Move approval. Got a motion from Cavami.
Second.
A second from Weigel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Those motions carry.
4.1, Consent to Assignment of Canad Loan Documents From Sternsbank to Bremer Bank Pursuant to the Terms of Canadian and City amended and restated lease agreement effective April 12, 2004.
Thank you. Mr. Gosted, this didn't make it to the committee at all. Could you just give us an update on what's happening?
Sure. The Bremer Bank is going, is in the process of being assigned and assuming the loans that currently exist with Canadian. They're owned by Sterns Bank, and Sterns Bank will be assigning and transferring those loans and the loan documents, those mortgage documents. Under the lease agreement that exists between the city and Canadian, there's provisions that speak to the city reviewing those type of transactions and consenting to them. And as a result, there are two documents that are in front of you. One is a landlord estoppel agreement or certificate, I guess. That's between the city, Canad, and Bremer. Essentially, this is kind of a standard document that when lending transactions occur in leasehold improvements, the bank generally wants information as to, you know, if the rent's been paid, if there's been any defaults. There's no action to terminate by the, or to terminate the lease by the tenant. We've performed what we're supposed to perform under the terms of the lease. And then also that this estoppel certificate would serve as sufficient notice under the terms of the lease agreement for this type of transaction. The tenant also in this document indicates that the lease is in full force and effect, that there's been no default by the city, and we fully performed under the terms of the lease. The next document you have before you is a consent to assignment of the agreement. What the city is doing here is consenting to the Bremer Bank, assuming this loan transaction. Again, you'll see a lot of the same language with respect to the tenant certifying that we've complied with the terms of the lease and all other agreements we have with them. And Bremer would then basically step in the shoes of Sterns Bank with respect to the agreements we have with Sterns Bank under, this is a lending transaction that dates back to the 2006 timeframe. Also, the city would release whatever claims it has against Sterns, and that's pursuant to the terms of the lease agreement, provided that we know who's taking over the lease as sufficient financial wherewithal, and certainly Bremer Bank has that. All of these documents would be executed, if approved, would be executed and would be held for the time of closing of the transaction between Bremer and Sterns Bank. And so there'd be some conditions that, you know, you're not allowed to deliver this until the time of closing, until everybody has signed off on the documents. So with that, did stand for any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Gosted? Comments?
I'll move approval.
Got a motion to approve from President Sandy.
Second.
Second from Mr. Cavami. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. 4.1 carries unanimously. 4.1 carries unanimously.
4.3, introduce ordinance relating to prohibited animals and exceptions 11-0216 and 11-0217. Also attached are citizen comments that have come in regarding this item.
Thank you. I got a few speaker cards. Why don't you guys okay up here and the speakers first, and then we'll go from there. So I'll list out the speaker cards. If anyone isn't on this and wants to speak after that, certainly step up to the mic. But you've got three minutes. Try to keep it to that if possible. I'm just going to go on the order I got them here. So if Suzanne Nelson is ready, she could step up to the... Lucky you, you get to go first, huh?
Because it calls today, right?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Appreciate your time. I understand you're very busy, and I'm not sure when we were celebrating 4th of July, we would be talking about chickens on Tuesday. So with that said, my name is Suzanne Nelson. I was born and raised on a farm in the Texas Panhandle. I've lived in Grand Forks on 8th Street since 2009 with my husband and two daughters. I learned some facts doing a crash course in chickens. I know chickens because I've lived on a farm, but urban chickens specifically. For example, did you know that chickens cluck at 65 decibels? That's about on par with a conversation. Dogs, for example, bark at 100 decibels. I also have learned, there is a website that's completely dedicated to city planning. It's called planning.org, and they have a whole section just on urban livestock. In that section are the documents that I emailed earlier today. Thank you for helping me with that. One is a document from the Environmental Law Institute in Washington, DC. The other is from a university in New York. Overall, there are two points that I want to address. First is regarding chickens specifically, and the second is the process to determine solutions. So for the chickens, the documents will detail some of the concerns that have been raised regarding chickens. Chickens are not shown to spread diseases any more so than any other what we would consider a normal pet, such as a bearded dragon, a dog, a cat. They're also not shown to depreciate property value, which I think is another concern raised by constituents in Grand Forks. In fact, despite the fact that Google searches have increased dramatically for urban chickens since the beginning of the pandemic, I was unable to locate a single documented instance where chickens have depreciated the value. There's a lot more detail in the documents, so I'll leave that for you to review at your leisure. I know that there's a lot of information in there, but all of the information is also cited in the documents themselves. Secondly, from an overall standpoint, I don't have an opinion on the chickens. I don't know what the best solution is. I will say, though, that I was a bit alarmed at how this came to pass. It came, the appearance is that this was decided on by the council members and a handful of Grand Forks constituents. I don't think this is something that the greater Grand Forks community agrees with in general. I had the opportunity to speak to President Sandy, as well as Councilman Weber earlier today, and really appreciate the time on a very busy day to speak to me about this. I would urge the council, if they're not already doing so, to consider some sort of prioritization matrix or a root-caused solution-based mechanism when trying to determine solutions for problems that constituents raise. I think that this is a really hard job. You guys have to constantly balance the needs and wants of the few with the many, and that's not always easy to do. For this specific case, I don't believe this is egregious enough for an all-out ban. I don't see anything that indicates that this is what the greater Grand Forks population wants. I don't see any sort of public health or safety concern that was immediately raised regarding the specifics and only chickens that we have in Grand Forks that are licensed. And I would strongly urge you as the authority to consider alternatives as opposed to an all-out ban. I know that this seems like a small problem, and it might add to bigger problems, but I think that the overall issue is warranted further consideration. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Ms. Nelson. Sarah Willardson.
Hi. Again, I want to thank you also for your time in hearing this. I think you're going to see there's probably a lot of people that were interested in chickens that didn't know they could get them, as I think the permits are showing. I was the only chicken permit holder as of last week, I understand. So, and I reside in Mr. Sandy's ward, so I'm kind of, I don't want to say I'm taking it personally, but I definitely feel that this is about my chickens. I was unaware of any complaints prior to your meeting. So I did, I reached out to Mr. Sandy and tried to find out what is the reason my chickens, you know, why don't you want chickens in town? And I honestly, I don't feel I've gotten any reason other than some people just don't feel they belong in town, they should be on a farm. Which is an opinion, and I guess that's, everyone has a right to opinion. We have things that our neighbors do all the time that we don't agree with. I don't feel it's the right for us to tell our neighbors what they can and can't do, though, unless there is a true reason that it's disturbing us. So I think we ended on agree to disagree, is how it came about. I also talked to public health, and my understanding is there was no formal complaints against me, although there had been some checking into as far as if they could enforce an HOA in my area, which that dissolved back in 2010. So there is no HOA in my area that would not permit that. So I think she created some really great points of what they are for. There's an article in the Herald about my son. We got these as a pandemic project. You know, he was home from school, he'd always wanted chickens. He's like, Mom, I'm home. And I'm like, you can't have chickens in town. But he did the work. He looked it up on public health. Mom, I can, I got to get this permit. We called public health. He went to the neighbors and asked them, can I have them? You know, are you okay with this? They gave it the okay. We got the chickens. We've raised them from little chicks in our garage, starting, you know, in a brooder. It was a family project. We built the coop for them that's insulated, obviously, our winters, where we didn't know how we were going to do this. And it's been a great family project. They've been a really fun animal, which is not what I expected. They're like, you know, they're contained, I'm in a privacy fence. You know, I guess the change is going to having urban chickens. That is just what we're seeing more and more. And I feel that not allowing them, actually prohibiting them, isn't really fair. I think there is a way we can work together to come to a common ground as far as there needs to be rules in place. Obviously, they need to be contained, but as far as prohibiting them, I think that was going a little too far. So that's all I have. Any questions for me? Owning chickens?
Thank you. Any questions? Since she offered, any questions for Ms. Willardson?
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. How do you get applause like that? I want to get one of those sometime. James Carney.
Thank you for the time, counsel. I'm here in opposition of rewriting the city ordinance regarding fowl in the city. I guess we were one of 10 permit holders in the last 10 years. I did not know, we didn't have a permit. We got a letter for renewal. I just haven't sent it in yet because it still gave me a window to turn that in. But we do have chickens on our property. We do live within city limits. I've had no problems with my neighbors, to my knowledge. I keep a good relationship with them. I ask them on a regular basis if there's any problems with our chickens, if there's anything at all, and we address them immediately. When we did the permit process, we were surprised how easy it was, simply because, you know, one, we didn't realize there was a permit, two, it was a simple email. I think previous permits were simply, we emailed saying we have chickens, they emailed back saying, get consent from your neighbors. We have two neighbors, no neighbors behind us. We back up against a mer's. Got their permission with no problems. We even actually asked them before we even knew there was a permit. So we tried to do the neighborly thing, asking. I would hope they would say something if there was a problem. But our chickens have, we've had them a little over a year now. There, we have currently eight chickens. We originally started with six, we got a couple more, and they live in an enclosure in the backyard. That enclosure is cleaned regularly. We've done our homework on how to keep them clean, because we don't want to spread disease, we don't want to have odor, we don't want to be a problem. And we've done our best to prevent that. And, you know, we sit in our backyard all the time, no odors, nothing. Our dogs are louder, the air conditioning unit is louder. We made sure not to get roosters. Roosters are loud, they wake people up. It's an alarm clock, so we don't, we didn't do that. The ordinance does not provide any guidance on roosters, so we took it upon ourselves, let's not have that annoyance out there. We don't want it, so why would our neighbors want it? An outright ban does seem a bit much. I think there's, I think it's a big step, completely removing that from the ordinance. The exception, the exemption that chickens do have did seem like a big step. I don't think there's a single person up here that wants chickens, that wants them banned outright or free rein. I don't think anyone in town is trying to build a commercial operation with chickens. It's also in the ordinance that you can't do that. But I don't think that's anyone's intent with backyard chickens. Our intent was to have something our daughter can take care of and grow and learn responsibility. And it was something that we enjoyed doing. The chickens are surprisingly a good time. They're easy to take care of. We have two dogs. Dogs don't care in the slightest about the chickens. We actually have wild dogs that came from a deployment. And that was our biggest concern, the dogs are going to get riled up. They haven't. The only thing that has been an issue with our chickens was an owl. Never saw that coming. Our coop is currently surrounded with cattle fence up and over, so nothing's really getting in there. I didn't really plan on threats from the air, but an owl did get in. Fixed that problem. I haven't seen the owl since. We've had no problems. So I think along with everyone else, we're happy to work on compromise, figure our way forward, but I am opposed to rewriting the city ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carney.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. The irony is that I'm amazed no one has remarked on it. Today is Happy Fried Chicken Day in the United States. So the subject is appropriate. As you can tell, I'm an honorary colonel. Awarded this honor by General Bruce Segard of the Gilby Militia. That doesn't have a lot of the sway once you're outside Gilby. But mayors, members of the council, and fellow patriots, I had a Dickens-like experience last night. I time-traveled through three different periods of history. And as you ponder the seriousness of this life-or-death decision before you, Thomas Paine asked me to pass on some advice. "These are times that try men's souls," said Paine. He's confident you'll find the inner strength to deal with the seriousness of this issue. Next, I found myself with Robert Kennedy. He also offered some advice. He stated, "Some people ask, why did the chicken cross the road?" He replied, "I dream of a better world where the chicken can cross the road where their motive is not questioned." That is the dream of Robert Kennedy. Why should we question the motive of the chicken crossing the road? And my third stop in my Dickens-like experience was in a Birmingham jail with a young Martin Luther King. Together, we worked on the first draft of his famous letter. "Does it matter what came first, the chicken or the egg?" Asked King. And then he added his famous quote, "I pray for the day when all chickens, whether born from a brown shell or a white shell, will be judged by the tenderness on the grill, not the color of their shell." I do believe he edited some for the final draft. And then as I awoke, I thought of two generally accepted great movies that ever were made: Citizen Kane, a classic by Orson Welles, and Chicken Run by Peter Lord. Who could ever forget that memorable quote by Mr. Tweed? Tweedy. Mrs. Tweedy, the chickens are revolting. Members, I'm someone who knows a thing or two about chickens. I urge you not to clock up this young man's entrepreneurial spirit. This is a slippery slope. Next animal control will be coming from Mr. Chandler's birdie. Who knows? PETA may well kidnap our own UND hawk and hold it for ransom in Fowl. These chickens have names: Lena, Stelly, Betty, Honey, Golden, and Clucker. Do not call a Fowl on them, F-O-U-L, on this young gentleman's legal fowl, F-O-W-L. Set the fork's fabulous five fowls free. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marhula. So is there no one else? Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this matter? All right, I think we can wrap that up, and I'll open up the council for comment. Mr. Sandy, please.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I have a lot of time to talk turkey with my wife and several other people. Spent a lot of time defending my position on this issue. Ms. Willardson and I had a very nice visit. Actually, Ms. Nelson and I had a very nice visit today as well. My concern never was about the, any of the current chickens that are in our community. My concern is whether our community in general feels that chickens should be part of our, part of our residential life or not. My feeling was, and still is, chickens are a farm animal and, in my opinion, belong on a farm and don't belong inside city limits. However, I've heard from lots of people that think chickens are great. I don't know if there are enough votes, because I haven't been asking council members their opinions. The two conversations I had with council members, I think they would even attest to the fact that I haven't been making calls, trying to get people to support a ban on chickens, because that wasn't what this was about. For me, this was about having the conversation and an open conversation about why we have chickens currently in our, in our, in our city and if it is a reasonable approach. So my discussions with the other two council members were related to, if there aren't the votes, then perhaps we should look to tighten up the current ordinance. It wasn't about me lobbying for people to change their opinions or even trying to impose my opinion on anyone else. I think, and I've always stated that the, all the council members are elected for their opinion, and we should be able to provide our opinions openly, at will, regardless of whether people agree or disagree, because that's why we are elected. And so my constituents weren't happy about what was going on in their neighborhood, which educated me on the fact that there are chickens in Grand Forks. And as I mentioned before, I didn't know, which is why I can fully and confidently say, this has nothing to do with this young man's chickens. I didn't even know he had chickens. I didn't know there were chickens in our community until I found out from a neighbor. And so therefore, I started asking the questions quite some time ago about whether other council members agreed that chickens should be part of our, our community. And if it dies for lack of a second, I'm not going to have any hard feelings. I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance as drafted by the city attorney.
Thank you. President Sandy, you have a second.
Thank you, Mayor. So I would make the suggestion, if I may, Mr. Mayor, that we would, knowing that there isn't an appetite to ban chickens from the city, I would suggest that we should take a look at the ordinance as it sits and perhaps change some of the language to add a limit to the number of chickens that would be allowed. And in addition to that, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure what that number should be. I've heard from some people that have chickens, that it should be as few as two. I've heard from Mr. Bedard that perhaps six or eight is reasonable. I don't know what that number is, and that certainly should be up for debate. But I do believe we should set a limit rather than having, having that open-ended. And then I would suggest that in addition to all adjacent properties being notified, I think we should change it from 75 feet back to the 200 feet that it was in 2008. And I don't think it should be measured. Um, and I don't think it should be measured from the chicken coop. I think it should be measured from the property line where the chickens may be wandering. But that's, uh, that's just my opinion on it. So I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna make that motion. I'll leave that up for other people to debate. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I guess my thoughts would be, you know, in order to not, you know, go back and have to do this again and have another conversation, is that, is, is there a council member that would wanna move to adding it to two-hundred feet and setting a limit, six to eight, somewhere in there, for chickens? Or do you wanna wait and have this, uh, further looked at, another introduction of an ordinance?
I'm happy to, if somebody has a, a, and a friendly amendment that they wanna make on the, the current language, I'm happy to move it forward tonight, certainly.
Vice President Mock.
Um, I wonder if it would be something that we should say all adjacent property owners should be notified as opposed to either two-hundred feet and all adjacent property owners, or if we could just leave it as adjacent property owners so that they could be informed.
Mr. Cavani.
A couple of comments. I, I agree, I think that two-hundred feet from, I like the idea of wherever the chickens can have access to, but I think two-hundred feet from that could be two houses over, potentially, and are they going to be affected? I don't know, right? So I think adjacent property to anywhere that the chickens could be open to makes sense. Um, I also like the idea that, um, we make this, uh, permitting process a little bit more accessible. I don't know what that means exactly, but I had feedback from somebody in my ward that said they had every intention of going through the process but couldn't find the form. Um, whether that's really truly, um, something that needs to be, you know, something we invest time into, I'd just like to look at that. Another thing that, if we're going to say, set limits, which I think we should, um, and I don't think that I'm, I have any expertise to do that, I think we'd have to defer a little bit. Um, I do think that there should be some sort of fine. I mean, if you have, if you have chickens and you're over the limit or you don't have your permit, is it, uh, you know, twenty-five dollar ticket? That is something that just acknowledges that the rules were broken and then we can have some sort of paper trail, even if it's a dollar per chicken in excess of the permit? Just something to track so that we're able to have some accountability. Um, what I don't like is that if, if someone's breaking the rules, it's just a phone call and then we hope that they abide by it. So I, I would like to see things tightened up and, and I agree that we'd have to increase the limit by something.
All right, do we have a motion from any council members or further comment?
I'll just add one quick thing, Mr. Mayor. I would agree, I, I do think that, uh, I, I think I've heard it a couple times, reasonable. What is reasonable? Um, and do I think four chickens, five chickens would be reasonable, six chickens? Sure. Um, what I don't wanna see is, what may be reasonable to me, uh, may not be reasonable to Mr. Gostad or, or Mr. Sandy or, um, or whomever may have chickens in their backyard. So I, I do think we have to settle on a number. Um, and I'd agree with Mr. Cavani that, that we also have to, um, if we have a permit process and that process isn't being followed, then there has to be consequences for that. We do that with, with every ordinance or city law that we have currently. So I, I do think we need to refine that, um, and, and have something in there with it and, and who's in charge of enforcing it and, and have that outlined within the ordinance so that we're not back here six months from now, um, talking about somebody having twenty chickens and we're not quite sure what we're gonna do with that. So, um, I think that would be reasonable.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Bedard, do you know, I guess, since you probably have the most historical knowledge, how many chickens people traditionally have had? I know you've had a small number of permits, but...
Uh, Mayor Bocinski, Councilman Mock. Um, we've had chickens in town under permit, uh, I think up to eight. We've also had quail in town. I don't remember the number on that permit, but they were in excess of what we would typically allow for chickens because they're smaller birds and kept in, confined in smaller cages. So there is differences among fowl. Um, as far as penalties, I believe there is a fining penalty available. Um, you know, should we receive a complaint and they not comply? I believe there are some penalties already in code.
Any further questions for Mr. Bedard while he's up there?
Sorry, not for Mr. Bedard. I would just add one thing. I just took a quick look on limit on number of animals in the city of Grand Forks. And effective August eighteenth, two thousand fifteen, there's a limit for cats and dogs in Grand Forks. And households are limited to have a total of not more than six cats and dogs, but no more than three of those can be dogs. So we're, we're limiting cats and dogs in our city at six. I, I would assume that limiting chickens at six would be fair as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rygel. Mr. Goss, did you have something to add, sir?
I do. Um, I don't mean to discourage the momentum that's going on and, and, uh, but there's a lot of momentum, uh, coming at me at once and, and, um, to, to draft, uh, the agreement. I'd like to, uh, have this come back, not necessarily through a COW, but at another city council meeting. Uh, I think the COW is July twelfth to the nineteenth as a first reading of an ordinance. It gives me an opportunity to work with Mr. Bedard to come up with the, the number. And, and suggesting six, it seems reasonable or it seems like a good starting point anyways. Um, 'cause I had the same, uh, information about number of chickens of six and quail, double that or potentially twenty, you know? Um, and I'd like to have the opportunity to sit down and draft this so that when we get together at a city council meeting as a first reading, we're moving in the right direction rather than, uh, a number of, uh, conditions. Before, I've had the opportunity to speak to the public health, Mr. Bedard as well, if that seems...
Sounds good. No, I think that'd be great. At least, uh, tonight, four point three in the, the outright banning of chickens through that is died for lack of a second. So why don't we, we'll move on and, uh, we'll just have, uh, some follow-up with you and Mr. Bedard, and you can bring something forward, uh, at that July nineteenth meeting.
We, we will do that.
Mr. Cavani.
Just wanna thank everyone that reached out. Um, when we do things, it's nice to get feedback. So I think we were heard pretty loud and clear, um, that there was a lot of people that were not happy with that. So I appreciate everyone's efforts.
All right. Any further discussion on that? Moving on. Five informational items.
Five oh one, investment portfolio as of May thirty-first.
Thank you. And six, citizen comments. Do we have any, uh, general, uh, citizen comments? Citizen comment period's open now. Citizen comment period is closed. Uh, seven, approval of minutes and bills.
Seven point one, vendor list and engineer's estimate as presented.
Do we get a motion to approve the vendor list? Mr. Sandy moves to approve. Second from Ms. Mock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Seven point one carries or approved. Seven point two.
And then minutes from May third.
Got a motion to approve?
[inaudible].
Sounds good. Is that a motion to approve? Approval from Mr. Sandy, second from Mr. Cavani. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes from May third are approved. Um, number eight, city administrator comments. Mr. Phelan.
Mayor Bocinski, members of the city council. Uh, on behalf of Mark Walker, he wanted, uh, me to update you on, as you recall, the, we submitted a grant application for the Vail Circle Area Stormwater Mitigation Project. We submitted it through the Department of Emergency Services and then to FEMA. Uh, we were, um, informed, we were, we did not receive that grant, uh, nor did any other grants since the state of North Dakota. Well, we were told that, encouraged to resubmit next year, that we had a strong application, but, uh, you know, North Dakota was not, uh, was not favored on any of those. As you recalled, um, that project was a total of seven point seven million dollars. Six million dollars were gonna go to a new pump station and then a, a parallel force main we were gonna put in there, uh, adjacent to the existing one. Also, a one point seven million dollar upgrade to the existing pump station on, on twentieth. Um, so we didn't move forward. That was gonna be a seventy-five, twenty-five, um, percent with, uh, twenty-five percent local, and we were gonna determine how local we should pay that, whether it's special assessment or city. So I think at this point, what we're gonna do is, Mr. Walker is gonna follow up with the Vail, um, town association and let them know that, uh, we were not successful, uh, that we were gonna plan to, uh, submit again. Perhaps there's some things that we can do at a smaller scale, but, uh, you know, seven, almost eight million dollar project is a big project. So we're gonna do that, just so that you're aware of that. Um, and we'll plan to resubmit that next year. And, uh, Mr. Walker may, may not be here, but he's gonna hand it off to, uh, the next person to get that submitted. So I wanted to say that unfortunately we were, uh, did not, not receive that grant. The other thing is that we are gonna present the mayor's budget on July nineteenth, so that's, uh, at the next city council meeting. Uh, so we're preparing that. And then the week after the week of July twenty-sixth, we're, we'll look for a date for, uh, council member, um, Sandy and Mock and Bean. We're supposed to meet with our counterparts over in East Grand Forks in the wastewater interconnect and let them know how, how the money is gonna go for their cost sharing, any updates, uh, whether it's wastewater related or others. So we're, we'll plan to find a date where we can get together with our colleagues over there, um, during that week. So with that, Mayor, that's all that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Nine, mayor and council member comments. Mr. Rygel, any comments tonight?
Uh, just briefly, Mayor. Uh, once again, thank you to the city of Grand Forks, um, the Alara Center, Hugo's, um, so many people involved with Hugo's Raceway. I think we have opportunities to continue this momentum in the future with, with other items that could come forward, um, that really make the experience for a family in Grand Forks important. I think that's important with, um, bringing new families to Grand Forks, retaining current families. So I think those are things we really need to continue to look at. And I know that's something that this council will do and, and Mayor Bocinski will do as well. So, uh, just again, thank you on behalf of Red River BMX.
Thank you, Mr. Rygel. Ms. Docler, any comments?
Next, Nate, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cavani. Mr. Vean?
Yes, I, I, there are a couple of comments I wanted to make. Um, both of these, I, I wanted to really recognize the Veterans Park and the work that we need to do in general for all the work that he did. I would probably add another, um, entity to that, to the, um, description of those that helped, and that was Garrison Division Conservancy District. I'm a Grand Forks, uh, county representative to that. So we have a recreation grant program that went to fund some of that too. And I say that just because some of the city, um, some of the Grand Forks County, um, tax dollars actually went to help pay for that in a separate funding mechanism. So we're all proud of that, um, in many different ways. I just wanted to bring that as one additional comment. And a second one, um, um, maybe for Danny, and, and just for something to consider. I, I really think the BMX track looked amazing. And I was out there once, I saw the, all the hard work that everybody was putting into the volunteers and, and hope for lots of good things to come in the future. Um, the one thing I was wondering if we should at least just consider, and that is, uh, any type of potential program to help those who maybe can't afford a bike and would like to have a BMX bike? Or maybe if there's a way that we can help those who maybe cannot afford to be a club member? Are either one of those two things helpful to make sure that all kids have an opportunity to use that track?
Uh, Mr. Vean, yes. Couldn't agree more. Those are vitally important. We are working with a, uh, local company right now to provide grants, um, where bikes would be purchased for kids, um, at no cost to them. And then we also are working with the Grand Forks Park District. They've got a scholarship fund where, um, those dollars would go towards funding the membership fee and race fee. And so, um, we're willing to work with any family members that are in need to, to get them involved and, and get them going in the sport of BMX.
Well, hey, that's a great, I'm glad to hear that. You guys are ahead of me on that one, but I think that's good for people to be aware of. So thanks much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vean. Vice President Mock.
Uh, no, just thanks for public input on policy.
Thank you, President Sandy.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate all your leadership in your first year on the council or as part of the council and as mayor. Really appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you. Much appreciated. It's been a year in the books and a few more to go. Hopefully, uh, hopefully we'll have, uh, better days ahead after the, I didn't wanna say it, after the last year is gone. So, um, with that, that's all I've got for comments. Wanted to thank council for the last year and, uh, any good years ahead. Thank you. With that, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Got a motion, Mr. Cav, uh, Mr. Rygel, second from President Mock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.[1778.65]